Now we'll move on to item B. City manager.
Item 6B, receive mid-year financial update report for fiscal year 2020-21 as of December 31st, 2020, and adopt the resolution approving a second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020-21 operating and capital budget.
City manager.
Okay, Javon Drogen, city manager. Can everyone see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the mid-year budget report for the current fiscal year. Again, the city operates on a July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. The information we're going to talk about now is for the first six months of the current year, so from July 1, 2020 to December 31st, 2020. It's important to note, and pause for a minute, to talk a little bit about the challenges that this city had when we adopted our 2021 budget. We just talked about the CAFR from last year. What we didn't mention in that presentation is we actually had a $4.2 million shortfall at mid-year last fiscal year. When we've begun the budgeting process for this fiscal year, we had an $8.2 million shortfall. And so this council took action to cut the city's budget by an additional $8.2 million, having already cut the budget by $4.2 million in 1920. As I know the council knows, but members of the public may remember, is that we froze a number of positions and actually went through a process of providing retirement incentives in order to save jobs. And through that process, this city has over 20 FTEs fewer this current year than we had last year. In addition, the city council took the action to put the TLT, our translated occupancy tax measure, on the ballot for the November 2020 election. That was passed and will be providing, on a pre-COVID basis, an extra $500,000 to the general fund. Now with COVID, the revenue is a lot less. But that action was taken in large part in response to the decrease in revenues and our overall plan to restore fiscal sustainability. And so the objective for this presentation is again, to provide a very high-level update of where we are six months in, and there is a resolution amending the current budget, and we'll talk about that. So in the presentation, it's simple. There's good news, there's bad news, and then there's good news. And so the good news is like last year, where we ended the year with a $2.2 million operating savings. This year, our prudent financial management continues to take place, and our expenditures are projected to come in a million dollars under budget. Now what's the bad news? We'll talk about that. The bad news is that we are seeing additional revenue shortfalls from our hotel room taxes, as well as vehicle license fees, to the tune of nearly $2 million in our budgeted revenue that now we know that we are not going to see. That's the bad news. And both TLT revenue and VLF is replicated in every city across this county. The good news is that we have positive growth in our sales tax that is actually projected to cover the revenue shortfall, and we're actually projecting to end the year with a moderate surplus. And so as a result, there are no additional budget cuts necessary. That is in large part to the revenue sharing agreement that this city negotiated with Walmart.com that is now factored into our sales tax revenue, and we have started to receive. And so again, even though we have revenue shortfalls again this year of $2 million, that is being more than covered by additional sales tax revenue. And so now we'll go through the detail, and then we'll be available for questions. The agenda is an overview of the general fund. We'll talk about the mid-year financial projection on the general fund revenues and expenditures. We'll talk about enterprises. Within enterprises, there's the water fund, the sewer fund, stormwater, as well as CityNet. And we'll talk about some of the positive performance of CityNet, even though we are seeing delinquencies, and we're working at turning around that enterprise. In addition, we'll present information on our internal service funds, and then talk about the additional budget amendments, and then have time for council discussion and direction. So again, a July to June fiscal year, and I will turn it over to Jim Still now to talk about our adopted budget.
Thank you, city manager, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. And again, I want to thank finance staff for all the work they did in putting this together, especially Esther Garabey Fernandez and Darlene Wong. So right now, we're looking at the general fund, and when the general fund budget was put together, there was a use of fund balance projected of $591,000. In other words, the city anticipated having to dip into reserves to cover some of the budget. And we're comparing that to last adopted budget. So also a deficit last year. This has to do with what city manager was talking about, where you guys went through two years of budget cuts. Next slide, please. This just shows where the total revenues are and where the expenditures go. Most of the 57% of the general fund's expenditures are in public safety. That is not uncommon in a full-service city like San Bruno's. Taxes make up 60% of your revenues. That's also not uncommon at all. Next slide, please. So now we have a mid-year projection, given that we're six months into the year. We had an amended budget of a draw on reserves of $233,000. And we'll get to this more about where the variances were. But now with the good news that the city manager mentioned, we're actually going to have, it looks like a surplus of $773,000 by year-end, which is good news and will not require any additional budget cuts. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to go over all these numbers, other than to say, if you look at the bottom, you'll see that we've received 45% of our budgeted revenues year-to-date this year. Last year, at this time, it was 42%. So we're trending roughly the same as last year as far as timing. That gives us confidence in the numbers that we've estimated. Next slide. So the major revenues, property tax, a slight decline, .2 million, $200,000 less, primarily a slowdown in property sales. So sales transfer tax isn't coming in as it had in prior years. Sales tax, with all the good news and bad news, is going to be up, we're hoping, $3 million compared to budget. So that takes into account some of the business closures, some new businesses, and in addition, the tax sharing agreement as well. All of those contribute to a net $3 million. Good news. Hotel tax unfortunately is still looking down. I just want to point out, when the budget was put together nine months ago, the city only had roughly one month of actual hotel tax revenues having received after COVID really started. So it was hard for staff to make a good judgment about what was going to happen. They projected a 40% decline in hotel and motel occupancy. It actually has been 75%. So it's a much larger drop, $1.2 million less than what we budgeted. Also, motor vehicle in lieu property taxes, $1.2 million drop. I think this might be worth saying a little more about. I'm just going to say that these are actually property taxes that the state swapped with cities, in return for taking motor vehicle fees away. Don't ask me why the state did that. It's complicated. This happened years ago. The state was supposed to make cities whole. Unfortunately, in San Mateo County, or fortunately for the school districts, many of the school districts in San Mateo County are called basic aid districts. They receive much more in property taxes than what the per pupil allocation is that the state guarantees. They keep all the difference. By them keeping all the difference, the school districts, that pulls from the pot of money that cities are reimbursed for the motor vehicle in lieu fees. So in the current year, the county has informed that we're going to be down $1,200,000 from what our budget was. Last year, it was $250,000 down. Now, the good news is, the governor has included in his proposed budget for next fiscal year, reimbursement to San Mateo County cities for last year. So there's a lag. If that goes through, you'll be receiving $250,000 next year. Next slide, please. So there are several adjustments that the budget amendment before you has, $160,000 in property tax. We talked about that. We talked about the sales tax, $3 million. Hotel motel occupancy tax, again, due to the pandemic, a drop of $1.2 million. And the motor vehicle in lieu taxes down, $1.2 million. So net overall, the bottom line is, your revenues are actually to the good due to the good news on the sales tax side. A half a million dollars net higher than what the amended budget is, but with some big reductions that you're going to have to absorb. Next slide. Department revenues also, again, due to COVID, planning revenues down $50,000. Building, though, has seen a pickup. There's been, I guess there was a delay in some of the large projects, some of the plan checks. That actually has been coming in, and you're seeing an increase there. Recreation, just like with last fiscal year that we talked about a few minutes ago, due to the facility closures, there's just very, very little revenue at all coming in in the recreation and park side and senior services and library. So net general fund departmental revenues are, we're projecting to be down $758,000 from the budget, and that's all included in the mid-year budget adjustment. On the expenditure side, community services, without having the facilities open to offer programs, has a lot of savings, both on the temporary salary side and supplies and materials. So they're projecting to see a $1.2 million savings. And police and public works, a slight increase. There's a couple items in the budget amendment to augment their budgets. So the net expenditures going down are a savings of $1.1 million from adopted. And again, I'm not going to go over all these numbers, other than to show that at this point of the fiscal year, we're at 52% of what we've budgeted, and last fiscal year at this time, we were at 51%. So we're trending about the same. Next slide. Measure G, the city does account for this separately. It is part of the general fund, but it's accounted for separately. This year is the first full year of Measure G funds coming in, and they're actually coming in higher than what was expected. Use tax, which is what Measure G is, is largely driven by online sales, and so that's been a very positive for the city. On the expenditure side, those are coming in at budget. We don't expect any changes there, but the Measure G portion of the general fund at the end of the year should be having a surplus of $724,000.
Right. Jim Still, if I can, with regard to Measure G, it's also worth pointing out that tax localization agreements for major construction projects are also contributing to additional revenue. And so we do have major construction projects in the city by private parties. All of the materials and supplies, the drywall, the concrete that is delivered to San Bruno, there's a use tax rate in San Bruno. And so that's partly the reason for that increase, because we have a few current construction projects and tenant improvements going on right now. And so companies are ordering things, having them delivered, and we get additional revenue. And that is going into Measure G because it is a use tax.
Next slide, please. For the enterprise funds, this compares how we are at this point of the year compared to last year, and the percentages, percent of budget are roughly the same year-to-year. There's really not much else to say about this slide. So let's go to the next slide, please. Internal service funds, about the same. There's really not a lot of surprises there, other than we've had some larger expenditures in the self-insurance fund. We believe a lot of those were one-time, so we think by year-end, there won't be any issues in the self-insurance fund. Next slide.
Jim, let me back up and just take a little leeway right now. Because of what we heard in the CAFR with regard to CityNet, and we know historically spending more than was brought in in revenue, I know the council knows this, but it's important to just say again, that this year's budget was predicated off, CityNet no longer digging themselves a hole with annually expenditures outpacing revenues. And so the adopted budget was set up to have revenues outpace expenditures. However, as we know, and as is reported in the staff report, due to COVID-19, there have been delinquencies that has brought down our revenue projections. However, it is important to know, based on the year-to-date, revenues are slightly more than expenditures. And so what the enterprise has done, because they are repositioning and actually working at operating as an enterprise, they have moderated their expenditures such that they do not outpace their revenues. And as we talk about in the staff report, the projection is, is that we are aiming to be balanced on revenues versus expenditures. Now, we do not think that we will, in CityNet, be able to contribute money to pay down the loan to the general fund this year. But the goal of stopping the digging, even though we are having depressed revenue due to COVID-19, is working, and that is showing out in this mid-year report. So I just want to highlight that, because I know that that was a major point for the council when we developed this budget, and now that we know that we are seeing nonpayment due to COVID-19, part of the question was, well, where are we at? And are we back to digging a hole? And so absolutely, as reported in the audit, CityNet is a concern that we have to address. But as far as we are showing and projecting, we are, and we certainly are projecting to have a balanced operating budget in CityNet. And it's worth noting on this page, just yet again, because we're talking so much about stormwater, that the adopted revenue in stormwater from the current level of charges is just under $700,000, but our expenditures are over $1 million. And that same trend is true with mid-year, which is revenues are outpacing expenditures. Again, a reason why the city has embarked on the effort to increase stormwater fees. Sorry, Jim.
Well, thank you for pointing those out. Internal service funds are funds within the city that service the operating departments. And these are typically budgeted to revenue-cover expenses. We're not seeing any problems at this point of the year there. So with that, the budget amendments that you have before you includes a revenue increase for Peninsula Clean Energy grant, $10,000. And Javon, do you want to say anything about this? I think you have more background on this than I do, as far as that.
Yeah, so for Peninsula Clean Energy, we did receive a grant to look at our energy codes as they relate to new development and utilizing gas versus electric. And so this is a recognition of the receipt of those funds. And the staff work is ongoing. It has not come to council, but we did receive the funds, and so at mid-year, we are presenting the council to reflect it.
And the next item, there was an increase in what the police department pays for the county for certain information services. So that needs to be factored into the police budget. We talked earlier about the property tax budget reduction and the good news in the sales tax. Next slide, please. We also talked about the hotel reduction and the motor vehicle in lieu, property tax in lieu of motor vehicle reduction. Business taxes, we're actually seeing an increase, business license tax. There's been additional business activity. I believe it was YouTube, YouTube receipts going up, so our revenues have gone up. On the department budget side, planning is requesting, is expected to bring in a $50,000 less in revenues. And we talked about recreation. We talked about parks and recreation and seniors being down. On the public work side, they are, and I'm not familiar with this, on the $50,000, what that relates to, that might be encroachment permits?
Yeah, so this is a $50,000 revenue increase. That is related to the ongoing efforts with regard to the stormwater increase process and the milling costs. For the $11,000 in the police department budget, that is related to additional support costs from April to June related to the police records management system. The service contract is over in April, and we need that to be carried through the rest of the fiscal year. So that is within $11,000 of the lights. The negative 139 is the senior services budget due to decreased programming.
Same thing on library. That's a decrease in revenues there. Fortunately, parks and recreation and seniors and library, on the far-right column, you'll see expenditure decreases. They're holding down their budget. They have, I mentioned earlier, temporary staffing wasn't hired, and they're holding off on supplies and materials. Vehicle outfitting, and I'm not familiar with this one either, my apologies, the $60,000.
Yeah, it's just moving a cost from the general fund to the equipment reserves fund for vehicle outfitting. And so we do have a equipment reserve fund that funds these activities, but in the initial budget, it was coming from revenues, general fund revenues.
Thank you. And then the last item, there was a need for additional traffic signal maintenance or replacement cost. So we need to use some Measure A funds to pay for that. So that's taking money from Measure A to use to augment the CIP for public work streets. Next slide. Water fund is showing a small reduction in revenues. Wastewater, much, much bigger reduction revenues. And unfortunately, we don't have the details on that now. With businesses closing, that has to be some part of that, and there's also an issue with delinquencies. So we'll try to get more information on that in the next week or so, because that was disturbing on the wastewater side. We talked earlier about CityNet revenues being down, so they're also reducing expenses so that revenues and expenses will be balanced by year-end. There's CIP. We want to augment a CIP, create a new one, to allow for more storage space on the city's financial system. It's running out of room on the server, so there needs to be more storage space. So we're moving $47,000 from another CIP project into this project. And YouTube made its payment for community benefit. That was part of its development agreement. This actually came in after December 31st, but it was such a big number, we wanted to report it here. Those funds are not being allocated for anything. City manager is recommending that those be set aside in the CIP reserve. The council, at some future time, and the city manager will discuss what those funds might be used for, but for now, they'll be set aside in the CIP reserve fund. So again, the major takeaways, sales tax up, hotel occupancy tax down, motor vehicle in lieu fees going down, and that's an ongoing problem. We don't see that going away. So unless there's some correction on the state level, that could very well end up being an ongoing issue. We don't know yet. Revenue declines due to the facility closures, and expenditures are pretty much within normal range for this point of the year, with the exception in the general fund that recreation, senior services, and library have reduced their expenditures with no programming going on. Next slide. On the enterprise funds, again, we mentioned wastewater and CityNet reducing the revenue budgets, but CityNet also reducing expenditures so that they can come in balanced at year-end. No real changes are requested for internal service funds. So at this point...
Go ahead. The council discussion and direction is to receive the report for the mid-year and adopt the resolution amending the operating and capital budget, and then we're available for questions. I do want to point out one thing that was not in the PowerPoint, but was in the staff report. In the staff report, we did talk about the potential federal stimulus funds that I know everyone is hearing about in Washington. And so the latest news is that hopefully they will be passed, if not later this week, next week. But there is a total of, in the current package, $350 billion for state and local governments. That money will be allocated, or is currently proposed to be allocated, based on a CDBG, a community development block rent formula. So based on our population, we know that San Bruno's portion of that $350 billion is 7.9 million. Now, should the federal stimulus be passed at the current recommended level, those payments are expected to be made within this fiscal year, assuming it happens within the next few weeks. We have not factored in that potential revenue to this budget. As we said, it's good news, bad news, good news, and at this point, without that revenue, we are projecting to end the year with a small surplus. It's worth noting that even if the city does receive that $7.9 million, which is essentially payment for lost revenue and expenditure related to COVID-19, that 7.9 does not eclipse the nearly $12 million that we've had to cut from the budget over the last two years. And so that's the 4.2 that we had to cut last fiscal year at mid-year, and the 8.2 that we had to pull out of the budget when we adopted this current budget. And so with all the ins and outs, it seems that we're going to end with a minor surplus. And if the federal stimulus is passed, there will be additional money to help cushion some of those financial challenges that we heard in the CAFR. So that concludes our report, and I want to thank Jim Still. I want to thank the entire finance team. And Sheng Yu, thank you for joining our team and assisting us over these last 24 hours as we prepare for this presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for your report and presentation. Questions, comments, questions from council this time? Councilmember Mason. Councilmember Mason?
So I just wanted to ask, thank you for that report. Going into the budget season, this will be my second time going into this with the city of San Bruno. What is a recommendation that you feel the council should really spend their time on after your review?
So for the upcoming 21, 22 budget, what is the recommendation on where council?
From the auditors, who, you know, third party, who have reviewed our books, who have seen our processes, who know where we've got some deficits, where do you think is an area that we should be focused on?
Okay, so sure, why don't I start with the summary and Jim Steele pick up. And so what we heard in the last presentation from the auditors was essentially, last year was a very tough year for the city. And there are two, and they found no material weaknesses in our audit, but there are two areas of concern. The most significant is city net with the 13.6 million dollars that is owed to the general fund. And the, and all of that, we know, right? And we've been working on this plan for city net. The new information that is embedded in the audit is the recommendation for an independent financial review of the city net business plan before the city embarks on the fiber-to-the-home project, should we decide to do that. And so that is an important piece that came out of the last presentation. And the second item is our stormwater fund having a fund balance at the end of last year at $400,000. And as the council and the public knows, we have launched this effort to address the health of that fund. More globally, as we move into the budgeting process for the 21, 22 fiscal year, the first thing that staff is doing is doing a projection on revenues and expenditures. We know that our pension costs and some of our other personnel benefit costs are gonna go up, and we have no ability to control those on a year-to-year basis. We also know that we have all of our labor contracts for all of our bargaining groups expiring in December 31st, 2021. And so that will be right in the middle of next fiscal year. In addition, based on the revenue projections for next fiscal year, that will tell us how much of a recovery we have of that 8.2 million dollars that we needed to cut. And so how much of that do we need to sustain going into the next fiscal year? And right now, we're literally having closed the books on the first six months, in the middle of making those projections and those assessments of what our revenue will be for the next fiscal year. And so we know we froze a number of positions, we pulled millions of dollars out of funded capital improvement projects and said, you know what, right now, we can't do that. We also borrowed $2 million from Measure G that the council and the community wanted to spend on road projects because we were facing such a significant deficit. And so I know that we will be having conversations if we receive the federal stimulus and if there's some recovery in the economy of backfilling that money so we can spend money on our roads, which we all know is a dire lead. And so, sort of at a high level, I think those are the things that we would be, that we will be concentrating on as we step into the budgeting process for next year.
And I would add to that, as a former finance director trained to be conservative, let's hope for that 7.9 million stimulus money, but I believe it's gonna be over a year before cities really know what the revenue picture is gonna look like. I think the economy may very well change. Who knows if hotel activity will pick up to what it was before? Is the travel industry gonna have a significant change in the long term? We don't know that. With all the internet shopping going on, is there gonna be a significant change in sales taxes and how that gets a portion to San Bruno? We don't know that. So I would just advocate keeping a conservative approach, knowing that you really won't have a good handle on revenues for at least a year. We won't really know how long the recession's gonna last and what the trends are gonna look like. So if we're fortunate enough to get the stimulus money, I echo what the city manager said, use it for one time, things that, things like capital improvements that you deferred, but don't try to use it for ongoing spending because it's just too much uncertainty right now.
Thank you. And then, will we be receiving an update on the emergency fund spending?
Yes, that was included in the mid-year report and provided to council in a memorandum. And so as we begin the budgeting process and future financial reports, that will be included.
Okay, great, thank you.
But councilmember, it's worth noting, or because you asked the question, highlighting, we are projecting that due to the projected surplus at the end of this current fiscal year, that we will actually not have to draw down our emergency reserve for the COVID-19 expenditures. And so that's an important nuance that, about that, that is captured within the reports that is before you tonight.
Okay, and I guess since, so since the last report that was given to us, has any money been spent from that emergency fund?
So the last report covered expenditures from March of 2020, so part of last fiscal year, through December 31st, 2020. We are now closing, we just closed the books on January, and there were some PPE expenditures, as well as we expend funds to do our annual, our monthly testing sites that cost a city under $3,000 a month. So yes, there were expenditures, since you received that report, that ended at the six month mark. But that is not presented in this information because that will be in the next six months of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question, and this is, this, the other question was actually targeted towards our third-party neutral auditor, but thank you for answering, city manager Grogan, but this one is for city manager Grogan. Where are we with our short-term rental revenue? Are we, are we moving towards receiving any money? Because that would be great to have as part of this, as part of the report as another revenue source.
Sure, so, back to the other, the auditor is not here for this presentation, the auditor has gone, the auditor was available for the last presentation on the CAFR.
Oh, my mistake, okay.
So that's why I answered that question. With regard to short-term rentals, the city council did pass an ordinance charging our transient occupancy tax, our hotel room tax, that is now 14% to short-term rentals. That has not been implemented at this time. Due to the process to implement that, as well as decreased staffing, we have not implemented that in the first six months of this fiscal year. There are two efforts afoot with regard to short-term rentals that's worth mentioning. One is doing a contract with Airbnb that will remit through their platform, Airbnb is the only platform that will configure their platform to charge the TLT tax through the platform and then remit it automatically to the city. And so it takes the whole side of it. And so if you own a short-term rental and you put it on Airbnb, you don't receive the money, it essentially is paid by the renter and then Airbnb reimburses the city. That is the fastest way to collect the revenue, sort of takes out the middle person. All of the other, and we're, we will negotiate that contract with Airbnb, and we have a draft note. The other portion is we have to set up an infrastructure to tax each individual host that is not using Airbnb because the other platforms currently do not do that. And so if you're on VRBO or whatever system, you're gonna have to interface with the city to become register and to remit money to us every month. It's a more complicated system. And due to the decreased travel and reservations and workload, we have not done that in the first six months of the fiscal year. The other effort that we are tracking with regard to this is that there's state legislative conversations about actually mandating all online short-term rental platforms to do what Airbnb will do, which is to, through their system, charge a tax and remit it to the governmental agency. That will vastly streamline and improve our ability to collect revenue from short-term rentals. And so that effort at the state is being talked about, and we are tracking it, and even participating in conversations that are happening at the league with regard to that.
Great, thank you.
Questions from council, and if there's any members of the public that would like to, if you could raise your hand, and I will check back after Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you very much. I think your first, whatever the first slide, good, bad, and good, that's the news we're getting today. Despite all our efforts to get through this, there's an additional $2 million that is Yet still, we have a surplus. So I'll take that win. I'm proud of what we've done. I'm appreciative to staff for all their hard work. So we'll continue going forward. A few questions that I have, so what is the actual projected hotel occupancy that we're anticipating for the next six months?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I don't have the occupancy figures. What I do know is that year-to-date, there's been a 75% decline in receipts. We're, we factored in for the rest of the year as if it were going to continue at that lower level. I don't know how that breaks down as far as what the room occupancies are at the hotels. That is something we probably could get, though.
Sure, thank you. It's, the conversations just brought that question out when I was listening to the data. And then the other observation is, we've been working on the master fee study to hopefully improve our revenues through our different departments. And of course, our, our former finance director was leading that, and he left. So these projections that we're putting in our revenue streams, it doesn't include any increases in the master fee study. And my guess, coming to the question now, is when do we anticipate moving forward with that? And when would it take effect from when we implemented that?
Sure. Thank you, councilmember Medina. So you're absolutely right, as a part of our comprehensive fiscal sustainability project, adjusting our master fee schedule is a key component. We've been hard at work at that, and there's a meeting scheduled next Tuesday, which I believe is March 2nd or 3rd, and where we will be presenting the recommendations of that master fee schedule. And so it's actually important to note that one of the reasons for that master fee schedule is that we need to increase the charges in, for example, our planning department. Right now, we charge our planners out at about $70 an hour. Well, most cities, the charge is over $100 an hour, and our cost is actually over $100 an hour. And so unfortunately, because our fees have not been increased in so long, we have a portrait that we show today in the mid-year budget where we're actually decreasing planning revenues by $50,000, even though we're sort of at a record peak of activity. It's because our revenues are so, our fees are so low, and we're not charging our full cost. And that's, that's a long story behind why the fees were not adjusted, but the council knows that we have an effort to increase those fees so we are not subsidizing private development. And so we will be bringing that forward to the council next Tuesday. There's a process where we will have the policy-setting conversation with the city council, but the plan is to have those fees adopted, there's a required noticing period, but have them take effect on July 1st for next budget year, the 21, 22 budget year.
Sure, okay. That's good news. Of course, everybody wished it was sooner, right? But the, any effort for a phased approach in the short-term rentals would be appreciated. I, I learned something today about that hopefully the state will follow through and regulate and require all these short-term rental companies to pay the city directly to keep, it just makes sense that it should be done. So those are, those are, those are my questions. It's, it's just nice to know that we're doing the best that we can, and we're gonna have a little bit of a cushioning at this time right now. So thank you, thank you, everybody, for your work. It's truly appreciated.
Thank you. I'm gonna do the last call for any members of the public. I've not seen any hands up, and so I'm going to come back to council, close public, and see if there's any other council members with questions or comments. Mr. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, you know, the projections here, they seem conservative, but I'm still a little gun-shut because it was a year ago this month that we first got the, all the bad news about all the things that had fallen through, and, you know, that was, you know, before we realized that we were going into a pandemic and things would only get worse. So I'm always nervous now about, you know, what we're projecting and whether we're being conservative enough. You know, it almost seems like, you know, the shortfalls now, there are some unknowns that are now known, and so we know not to expect any more TOT, and we know sales tax is gonna be down. We know where some is coming, where some isn't coming. We seem to have our arms around that. But, you know, looking at the numbers, just as a general fund, it really looks like we're kind of predicting a wash where, you know, the, the shortfalls that we know about are just being covered by the increases that we do know about. But there's still a level of risk that's out there that I think is maybe not being reflected in this. I saw an article this morning that said that SFO is predicting that it might be six years before they recover, back to, you know, pre-COVID conditions. There may be other businesses that are suffering now. The shelter-in-place affected a lot of businesses, things fall, and, you know, I'm wondering, you know, how fragile they're gonna be coming year. You know, Sears kind of surprised us last time, last year. Are the other, on the verge? And so, maybe what I'm looking for is some reason? Are we gonna?
For councilmember Salazar, again, first, let's talk about our major revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, and then we'll talk about TLT. And so with our property tax, we are projecting a slight downturn in property tax. However, we do track assessed values, which is what property tax is based off of, and what we know is that the property tax that we are all paying this year is actually based on the assessed value that was enrolled in 2020, actually July 31, July 30, 2020. And so we know that that's And so we know that that's the assessed value. And so working with our property tax consultant, we have very good information on exactly what the property tax remittance will be because we know the assessed value. And we are also on what's called the TEATER plans, which is, uh, if they are not, we are reimbursed from the county one hundred percent of what we put on the roll. And the county has a responsibility for the collections and, and anything, uh, and any, um, interest that they collect on that. But we are, we are reimbursed for what we put on the roll. So, uh, we have really good information on, on property tax. With regard to sales tax, uh, we track that on a quarterly basis, uh, with, uh, HDL, which is our sales tax consultant. The city receives confidential information on, um, quarterly, actually monthly, but quarterly remittances from each individual business in, in, in the city. And so that information, we know, uh, what each business is remitting in sales tax, we track it. In addition, uh, we ha, while we have not yet received the sales tax payment from Q four in twenty twenty, so that's the October, November, and December quarter, when Santa typically comes to town, uh, we do know the, one of the largest components of that revenue source because we have, uh, directly communicated with the property taxpayer. And so we know what they paid to the state and now we are waiting for that money to be remitted to us that happens in March. And so on sales tax, we have really good information, uh, and where, and we are confident in our sales tax projections. With regard to transient occupancy tax, TLT, the hotel room tax, we, uh, have decreased the budget to the current trend, which is roughly a seventy-five percent decline, uh, from budget. That's actually depressed from last fiscal year because we cut the TLT budget last fiscal year. Uh, and so we appear to be almost, um, I would say at rock bottom for TOT re, re, remittance. Um, and we're only projecting twenty-five percent of that, of that revenue source, uh, for the remaining fiscal year. And as we go into the reopening tiers and we may bounce back, absolutely. Uh, but we are doing that sort of based on the depths of, um, uh, of occupancies at a twenty-five percent. Uh, what is also not factored in, in, in there is the additional, uh, two percent of the TLT increase that we, uh, that was passed in November that went into effect in January. We might see moderate and miter payments in that because TLT revenue is so low, but that may, uh, uh, interplay to that. And so staff is confident in the revenue projections, uh, that are in the, that are in the mid-year budget. Uh, and we have projected conservative reven, additional revenue from our sales tax sharing agreement in the first and second quarter of twenty twenty-one. Um, knowing that the, the amount of money that, that, um, we have information on from the last quarter of twenty twenty is actually the largest quarter because that's when Santa comes to town. And so, uh, we're, uh, we, we, we are, uh, working it at a very, very detailed level, um, and, um, and feel confident in the projection.
And, and just one more point really quickly, uh, another source of shortfall was the, uh, uh, the permits that didn't come through because projects were delayed. How, how confident are we on, on those projects that were carried over that we, uh, that, that they're still on, on track in whatever you said?
Uh, so those eight per project that accounted for twenty-five million dollars last, on the audit, um, we, on budget, print that out, not just in fiscal year, but over both this fiscal year and last, and, and next fiscal. Uh, and so that is one of the reasons why we are actually taking down that revenue projection because we know that some of the largest projects have already started and paid their fees. And so we have a pretty good handle on the, we feel that we have a pretty good handle on the permit revenue that will come in the current fiscal year. And, and it's the larger projects that really account for the, for the swing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not at this time, uh, I had some, Councilmember Mason.
I wanted to ask, um, a question about the, I think because the water rates were kind of surprisingly just really healthy condition, um, I wanted to ask our, now that I'm clear, he's not a third-party auditor, a third-party consultant, um, just whether, I don't know who I did. I don't know if they did. They're going to bed, I apologize. Um, but whether there's any, um, it, I guess traditionally, my question is, do these healthy funds stay healthy for a while? Meaning if they're invested conservatively or they're taken care of conservatively, is this something that we're not going to have to worry for a couple of years?
Councilmember, are you asking about specifically about water and wastewater then?
Yes, I apologize, water and wastewater.
So.
The earlier report in this report, and then I think we had another report, we have had other reports by the city manager, and I see that your history is, and you've worked in various cities, um, is, does that mean we have a healthy forecast for the next couple of years?
What I can say is there are uncertainties that happen in water and wastewater as well. And a big one would be, for example, during drought years, um, sometimes people, uh, water rates may go up, people conserve more, and you actually bring in less revenue. Sometimes things are counterintuitive. And we don't know what's going to happen as far as weather, so that's a big uncertainty. Um, wastewater rates tend to trend along with water rates. So I'm curious about how the water and wastewater went different directions, um, or why it was so much more dramatic on wastewater. And don't forget that a lot of your, um, water and wastewater rates will need to go towards continuing your capital improvement work. So you're able to put a pause on that for next year. Um, you'll, you'll need to continue that effort. You'll need to continue with your capital improvements. And over time, if you don't keep your rates up to, uh, if you don't raise them with the cost of living, it just means down the road there'll be double-digit increases. So you were, you were very prudent in setting five percent rate targets and, I mean, I, I don't have a crystal ball, but that does not seem unreasonable for an ongoing set of, um, revenue increases to expect.
Okay, um, and finally, I had questions similar, uh, with Councilmember Salazar, and I think they got addressed and answered, and I appreciate that. So, uh, again, uh, I know every finance director always says they, they want to be conservative, so we'll have to, uh, see where our, our new finance director fits. But it's always, we, we do project like in the permits and the other things that the council member was saying. Um, and so it's always nice to be able to finish with a little comfort than it is to, uh, be worried, uh, at, for the end of the finish line whether we will. So, um, I would hope that we continue on that path. And I understand from the city manager, he's still responsive to the council themselves, but that's where I was going a little bit too. Um, okay, so this is an action item. It is a resolution, um, to approve a second quarter budget amendment for twenty twenty-one operating and capital budget. Is there any action from council?
Through the mayor?
Uh, yes.
Uh, we adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating on capital improvement budget by approving the budget amendments discussed, discussed tonight.
Motion made, uh, motion made, hold, hold on, please. Motion made and seconded, uh, Hamilton, I saw that, Hamilton and Salazar, uh, to adopt the resolution. Um, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Mayor, there's a public comment.
Okay, well, Mr. City Manager, the public comment, I had an opportunity for that. I, I have a motion on the floor and I need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Can't hear you.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and what I am trying to do is asking for public input and, uh, had given an opportunity of saying we're going to go back after Vice Mayor Medina. Um, let's go ahead, uh, for the public comment, if it can be done quickly, please, so we can go on to the public hearing, which some people have been waiting for, please.
Okay, uh, Shabina Jaleel?
Thank you.
Shabina, I'm trying to unmute you. I'm unable to unmute Shabina Jaleel.
Okay, I appreciate, uh, the effort. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that we're not able to connect with you at this moment.